Meeting is called to order. Mr. Ryan Cairns will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Ryan. A roll call will be determined if we've got it going.
Fruit?
Here.
Tappley?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Downs?
Here.
Cairns?
Here.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes after the council's set on a moment to review and then obtain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda. I mean the minutes, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Motion by all the person Walters, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Tappley, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify if I say aye. Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes approved. Next will be approval of the agenda. Please review, if we need any amendments, please let me know. One amendment that we need on public safety, item nine, it reads chamber picnic license and set of taste of the hills, June fifteenth, should read midsummer's night market, seven nineteen, eight sixteen, and nine twenty. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of item nine.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Melby, is there a second? Second by Mr. Downs, any discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify if I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, agenda is approved. Next up, city and utility department had reports and concerns. Let's start with Mr. Billy Jones.
I can just, I'd like to report, we had our first annual cops and boppers event this weekend. It was scheduled for Saturday, which got rained out, so we postponed it to Sunday. We had a little bit of a concern that we wouldn't get as much show up, but we had eighty participants come out, kids, plus their parents. We caught fifty-nine fish. The largest was a ten-incher, so it was pretty cool for the first annual. I think we served about a hundred and twenty-five hot dogs, a bunch of potato chips, a bunch of water. Had awesome donations from some local and not-so-local vendors. And we, everybody had a real great time. Turned out really well, we had a lot of fun. There's some pictures on the Facebook page, if you jump on the Facebook page at some point in time, take a look, give me a comment, it's awesome. And then I can give you an update on our current hiring situation. We offered two conditional offers of employment out to a full-time and a part-time officer. They both accepted, so we're going through the background process right now, whittling it down with hopes to send our full-time hire to the academy starting on June tenth up at Sparta Technical College. So there's a lacrosse technical college at the Sparta Ranch. So, working out.
Questions or comments for Chief Jones? Please believe, Mr. Scott Gold?
Good evening. Electric side, we do have an opening. We had a resignation on Friday, so we're actively looking to replace a journeyman lineman apprentice. I really haven't been in here to talk to you guys, I guess in the last few months, we did, every three years, we started back in 2008, I think, with an RP3, it's a national award on our electric utility. We received platinum, we were at diamonds, we were one point short, but we'll do better in the next round. But on a national level, reliability, safety procedures, things were judged and received our plaque down in New Orleans in April. Basic maintenance, and the big thing in the electric department, we're finally getting our AMI meters in, so we've been AMR reading, we drive around and pick up the readings instead of walking like we were years ago, and we'll be going to where all that's fed into a mesh system and then fed into our billing system. So, meters are a year plus as far as to get, but we just actually received our first four for our first article of approval today. So, by August, we should have half of them, and then in another six, seven months, we'll be able to get them all installed. It's about it on electric. As far as the street project and stuff, we just got some underground conversion things for the streetlights up there, poles and poles, and basic, just conversion of underground to, or overhead to underground like we normally do. We've been really lucky with the storms that have been near us, and we really haven't had any outages, so that's a testament to the crews doing good tree trimming and the conversion. As long as I'm here, I talked to Ashley a little bit on the fireside, just to report real quick, we've got fifty members, so most we've ever had on the department. We're at eighty-four calls, and things are going really good. It's really encouraging that we've got a lot of youth that show interest. I actually was contacted yesterday, there's two more folks in our community that want to become members, and we really don't have any lockers right now, and most fire departments do not have that issue, so feeling very fortunate from that side. That's all that.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Gold? Stacy, is that you back there?
Thank you. I would just like to mention that at the library, at the mountain hiring process, we're a couple of part-time positions and a full-time position. We are now fully staffed and just in time for the summer reading program, which starts next week. You can find summer reading information on our website, Facebook page, and on WRCO.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gold?
I don't want to talk about it.
For the street department side, we've been doing a lot of crack sealing. We started off the painting project this year. Along with the crack sealing, if you're out and about, you see the white toilet paper across the road, feel free to drive over it. Minutes after we put it down, you can drive over it. We've been doing it, one curb project, and been doing a lot of patchwork, trying to catch up from the puddles throughout the winter. We started on the weed spraying of the curb and gutter last week. We're doing that kind of as, as fill-in work here, as we need to and as we can. The crews have been working hard and keeping at it.
Questions or comments? Mr. Glasbender?
All right. So I usually report to my home committee, which is finance, but just so people are aware, on the website, there is a director's report under the finance meeting section. These are just some of the items that I've been working on since the last report, which would have been four fifteen twenty twenty-four. There's been a couple of public presentations that were made. We, I am on the WRCO radio about once every month and a half. A lot of work being done right now on the Congressional Directed Spending Grant that we were awarded, just had our first webinar today to begin to receive the million lines of instructions that are associated with grants. So, you should see activity at Los Amigos. That is pertaining to a CDI grant that we've successfully processed here at the city to assist them through the project. Panorama Estates, we are in a legal phase of that agreement, we're just trying to get the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. Of course, you will hear tonight about Hill Country rental and the property acquisition projects that we've been working on. There's been a lot of activity from my office on that. Weight finding and entrance signs will be, we should be seeing those shortly. It's gone a little bit slower than I had hoped, but we are making progress. Some other things like future kind of conceptual planning on subdivisions, traffic study work. Another grant that we had worked on, we did receive notice that it was not accepted by the House of Representatives, but we believe there still may be hope on the Senate side. That was a grant that Ashley and I wrote for, for four-point-one million dollars worth of funding. There's continued work on the Highway fourteen corridor hotel project, and I'm consistently involved with Southwest Regional Planning on a county level here in Richland County for resiliency planning, so.
Thank you. Ashley, did you have anything at this time?
I will, I will report. We had the auditors in last week. We successfully got through that phase of the project. We'll be continuing to communicate with them to finish the audit process, which you should receive a final report by August. That's the target date. And we are going through the hiring process. We've conducted several interviews and are continuing to do interviews, and that has been a very positive experience, and I hope to have conditional job offers out very soon.
Thank you. Mr. Wendell, anything at this time?
As usual, Mr. Mayor, you will hear enough out of me later.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next on the agenda, mayor and all the persons, committee, commission, board reports and comments, what happens to be discussed at a future meeting. Mr. Ron Fruit?
Only that I think everyone deserves kudos for a good job with the Memorial Day program and the community, making a pivot from the traditional cemetery setting to Crosscut Park. I thought it was well done and well attended.
Thank you, Ryan. Karen Tappley?
Yes, a few things tonight. From tourism, typically they meet the first Monday of the month, but we need to appoint another commissioner, so the next meeting will be next Monday at 5:00 PM. This will be my last time to report, because Ron Fruit will be the city rep going forward, so you will hear from him on tourism going forward. Just to follow up to Stacy's report, the library, we also have a new board member. Robert Brookens has been named to take Linda Jentis' place. And then, several adult programs and four juvenile programs with forty-eight attendees. We also have a furnace that's going to be, to be replaced, and so working through all that. I just want to say thank you to Stacy for doing both jobs at the library. But like she mentioned, the full-time position is for the programming coordinator, which takes up a good deal of time, so thank you for your extra efforts there. And then, Historic Preservation Committee met, let's see, where are we here? We met on May fifteenth, and we have the privilege to move the Vernon Thompson Historical Marker project forward. So, we are, have the words all figured out, and for the job on that, we just want to finalize them, because all of that needs to go in with the application, and so that will be very good moving forward. We also want to kind of consider what the role of that commission is going to be going forward as it relates to the history room at the library. So we'll review all of that. And then, ad hoc committee for council rooms also met, and did a kind of a good dive on that project, and we will be meeting again on six twenty-four to continue. And then I have a request for an item on the agenda. I've been, several constituents have asked, as well as this was brought up during budget process, if we could have a representative from the Woodman Aquatics Center, probably Mick Cosgrove, to appear at our July meeting to give us a report on the status of the donors and where that relates. And then, there's one more thing. I had the opportunity to attend Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities was a conference that was held in Platteville. It was very informational. I attended three different tracks, pretty much for startup support for businesses, as well as that incubator roundtable event. It was very, it was very well, very well done. That's all I have.
Thanks, Karen. Mr. Tom McCarthy?
Nothing to nightmare.
All right. Mr. Mark Chambers?
Nothing. Nice evening, sir.
Okay, Melanie Walters?
I have nothing to nightmare.
Mr. Kevin Melby?
Nothing to nightmare, thank you.
Steve Downs?
Nothing to nightmare.
Ryan Cairns?
Nothing to nightmare, thank you.
Just one thing I'd like to inform the public, I've had several, people ask me what they're doing at Walmart with the, they're doing some remodeling out there, reconstruction, and they've moved some dirt on the end of the building, and people assume they were expanding or adding something. They're not. They're moving the grocery pickup from the middle of the parking lot to the end of the building. That's why they're moving dirt. It's not something different. Apparently, QuickTrip actually called Walmart to ask them if they were adding a gas station. They are not. And also, Mr. Fruit already mentioned this, but I wanted to thank everyone that was involved, who was involved. The Memorial Day observance that was held this year at the pavilion in the park moved it because we were assured roadwork would start before Memorial Day, making the traditional path to the cemetery impassable. Weather delays slowed back, so that didn't happen, but the plans were made, and it went really well. And I've had a lot of compliments, and a lot of folks that were there actually schemed to prefer the venue, which isn't what we were going for, but that's the feedback we've been getting. So, and I know the high school band loved it, because they weren't climbing a hill, and it's just one of those things, and we changed on the fly, and it went really well. Okay. Next on the agenda is the treasurer's report, Ashley told me is not prepared tonight, so, but Mr. Wendell says we have to have exactly what?
Per the rules of the council, the treasurer must report each month, even if it's no report.
There is no report, but there is the monthly utility report that is attached to your packet.
That suffice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, payment of the bills. Please review the bills, entertain a moment to approve. Just a moment, the bills presented on this day, excluding any library fund invoices, having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee and said committee, having duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions. There are no adjustments or exceptions listed. It is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills?
Motion for Ms. Tappley to pay the bills, is there a second? Second by Mr. McCarthy, any discussion of the bills?
I have a quick question, actually two questions. Page two of the unpaid, there are two items, oh, let me look here, sorry. It's about two-thirds of the way down under the council, to Land Ready and Company. Amount of ten thousand five hundred, and then also one for twenty twenty-four MH Park tax to the school district for ten thousand three fifteen and change. Can you expand on those at all?
What was the first one?
It was that expert witness fee for the assessment.
Ah, thank you. And the second one, MH Park tax?
So MH usually is referred to mobile home?
Thank you. That's all I need.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Melby?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Carey?
Okay, next on the agenda, Finance Committee recommendations in action, Mr. Ryan Cairns?
Item three, resolution twenty twenty-four dash three, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for utility infrastructure improvements. At Finance, prior to council meeting, Mr. Andy Zimmer is here, and he did such a good job explaining what this was about. Would you care to do that again?
I will. I'll give it a, in the bridge, ripergia, yes. Okay. So, the water utility has been endeavoring to remove lead service lines from the system. Public Service Commission does not allow utility funds to be expended for the replacement of private side services. Steve has been very diligent in using his new vacuum excavator to identify in inventory all the lead service lines, and those service lines that consist of galvanized, in that, those galvanized service lines that have been previously downstream of lead are considered by the Department of Natural Resources as being lead services, and the commission has then approved MSA to submit an application on their behalf for lead service line funding for the private side of the service laterals. That funding consists of fifty percent grant given to the homeowner, and then fifty percent will have to be paid by the owner or homeowner or some other means. So, as part of the civil packet, which is due June, by June thirtieth, the resolution to reimburse funds is an authorization that is required by the, by the Department of Natural Resources, which essentially allows all expenses incurred prior to the closing loan to be reimbursed through this, through the loan program.
Thank you. My motion would be to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash three, declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures for utility infrastructure improvements.
Motion for Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion to suspend the rules of wait for reading?
Yes.
Okay, can we have a second from Mr. Melby, or motion, your second also includes that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Motion carrying?
Item four, municipal building generator purchase and installation. Mr. Gold, did you hear?
Sure. So this was kind of discovered, we're adding a Skada-type system, text alert from our substation. We're starting with the Olson sub on a fiber that will text the line group if we have a blink on the system, if there's a squirrel, a tree branch, and then it sends us a text that there was an operation and a breaker at the substation. When we came back here, we discovered that only half of this building, only the police side, is on generator. All the city side, all the offices, everything over here is not covered. So, we went out and got quotes, we budgeted on the utility side to split it with the city. Got four different quotes, three from Wallace Electric, one from Miller Electric, with the Kohler from Wallace at nineteen thousand seven thirty-two ninety-five, that's coming in at the cheapest, and the recommendation from myself, to the Finance Committee. Utility will be paying half of, and that would be ninety-eight sixty-six forty-eight, and the other half would be on the city.
Thank you, Scott. My motion would be to purchase the Kohler from Wallace Electric in the amount of nineteen thousand seven thirty-two ninety-five, with our half from the city being the nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-eight cents from Outlay.
The motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Ms. Tappley, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
Carey?
Thank you. Item five, purchase of a new leaf vacuum. Jason, would you like to?
Sure. So I went out to get some bids on a new leaf vacuum to update our leaf vac that's from nineteen ninety-four. I did come up with three bids for that. I got, two of them were for new leaf vacuums, one from Queen Equipment. They came in at seventy-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. It's for a new Titan Pro. And then the second was from Bonnell Industries. That's also a Titan Pro, and that came in at seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The third, also from Bonnell Industries, is a used two thousand seventeen Extreme Vac, and that came in at forty-five thousand. Everything on the Extreme Vac meets requirements, except our dust containment system. I did go down and look at the used leaf vac here a couple weeks ago. It's been a demo unit that has about a hundred and twenty hours on it. It's everything we need, except for that dust containment.
Thank you. My motion would be for purchase of the used twenty seventeen Leaf Vac from Bonnell Industries at forty-five thousand, coming from Outlay Machinery.
We have the motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Melby, is there discussion?
I would just like to thank Jason for being responsible of city funds and finding suitable replacement, and like when we talked, not requesting three hundred or four hundred thousand-dollar self-propelled leaf vac that we use all the time here, so, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Carey?
Thank you. Item six, purchase of one set of lighted crosswalk signs. Jason, you talk about this for?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I got two bids in on the crosswalk signs, one coming from Decker Supply, they're out of Madison. This is the same system as we currently have within the city, six thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents on that. The second was from Econo Signs. These are similar to the lighted stop signs at the four-way downturn, so they don't have the pedestrian button, they just continuously. That came at five thousand one twenty-two seventy-seven. The recommendation on that is to go with Decker Supply, keeping the signs uniform for the city.
Thank you, and my motion would be to purchase the lighted crosswalk signs from Decker Supply in amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents from the Sign Marketing Supplies account.
Okay, motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Downs, okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tappley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Carey?
Thank you. Item seven, fund allocation lease agreement regarding Hill Country land acquisition. Jason?
Yes, so we reviewed in Finance Committee, it's here before the council, to just find, do a final authorization on the use of funds for the purchase of the Hill Country property. The background of this is on two six twenty twenty-four, the council authorized personnel to carry out the acquisition of land owned by Hill Country Properties using cash on hand at a total cost not to exceed six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This should look familiar, because it was in the cover sheet then, and there's numerous records of it online. But these are the properties and kind of the property diagram. Kind of the progress report is that the transfer agreement between parties, which is also in your council packet available online, was executed on three fourteen twenty twenty-four. The municipal exemption resolution is, will be in a later agenda item tonight. That's so that the municipality has less risk and is eligible for funds in the case that there's brownfield contamination fund. That's a resolution that gets sent to the DNR. We did successfully complete the Phase One Environmental. It was completed by MSA at a cost of two thousand seven hundred dollars. We will also do a brief review of that a little bit later in the agenda. Staff and the land sellers have agreed that a single closing involving all seven parcels is most likely the preferred path forward at this point in time. Initially, we thought that there may be some benefit to closing in two pieces, both to the landowner and to the city, so doing one transaction in this year and one transaction in the next, but it's kind of proven out on both sides that it is probably not the preferred path forward. Closing date tentative is set to June twenty-fourth, or the home must be removed prior to the closing. There's still a home on the property. The anticipated closing costs are about six thousand five hundred and forty- Closing date tentative is set to June twenty-fourth, or the home must be removed prior to the closing, there's still a home on the property. The anticipated closing costs are about six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. Staff recommendation is to approve the use of funds and the lease agreement that is in the packet to be executed as part of the closing of the land sale purchase from Hill Country Rentals. The financial impact and funding source, so the, the use at closing would be of approximately six hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. The, the use or the funds identified would be the RLF Business Savings Fund where there's a balance of five hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and three dollars and also a portion of a pool five which is a TIF Affordable Housing Extension Fund balance which has a balance of one thousand, or one thousand, one million fifty-six thousand one forty-seven. So the motion that was passed by Finance is the, the exact motion that's represented there and that is the same motion that we're seeking from council at this point in time.
Thank you Jason. My motion would be to authorize the distribution of funds for the Hill Country land acquisition with monies from Pool Five Affordable Housing and the RLF Business Fund to be determined by city administration and legal council and approve the lease between the city and Advanced Pump and Well Solutions Inc. to be executed in conjunction with the land sale purchase closing.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Cairns, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tepley, is there discussion? Okay, hearing them, we'll need a roll call.
Cairns.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, next on the agenda, Public Safety Committee recommendations in action, Mr. Kevin Melby.
All right, Public Safety met yesterday and listed both items on the agenda, first is number eight, which is the application for temporary Class B for the Taste of the Hills on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at nine fifty North Orange Street. The hours are on there from four until nine. I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, is there discussion? Okay, hearing them all in favor of approving the temporary Class B picnic license for, from Great Origin Area Chamber of Commerce for Saturday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four for Taste of the Hills, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
All right. Number nine, three items for the Midsummer's Night Market, the first being on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at Littit's Depot, nine, three ninety-seven West Orange Street. I will make a motion to approve the Class B picnic license.
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs, any discussion? Hearing them all in favor of approving the Class B picnic license for the Midsummer Night Market, July nineteenth, August sixteenth, September twentieth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All right. In your packet, for number ten, you will find the ordinances, Public Safety has gone through updating several and changing some other ones and getting rid of some. We had discussions on this, there will be a change, the alternate site parking on the four hundred block of North Pearl Street, which is on the east side of the hospital as there's no parking lot on the side where the hospital is, and then sections one one point nine five A and one oh one point zero nine five C. Rewriting parking around the former Jefferson and Lincoln Schools, these are new ordinance and posted as no parking during school days from eight AM to four thirty PM since they're no longer schools. Okay, my motion to repeal that and my motion to exempt those ordinance.
Okay, motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, the second, this will be ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash two. You want me to read that, Mr. Wendell, or should we suspend the rules of way of reading?
Your motion is suspended.
Does your motion include suspending the rules of way of reading, sir?
It sure does.
Does the second include that as well?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much. Okay, any discussion? Hearing them, we'll have a roll call, please.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, next item eleven, report on phase one environmental site assessment on Hill Country Property being acquired by the city.
Yeah, so this was the phase one environmental that it was referred to that MSA conducted on our behalf. This is a requirement by the DNR and most federal granting agencies that would, that would offer assistance in the case that there was additional brownfield contaminants found on the site. So we do a phase one, which is basically a big history search and they, they provided a summary report of, of the things that they did. The report is actually much longer than this, but the important part for, that I wanted you all to be aware of is the summary, which basically says they're, they're not, sorry, I'm trying to get there. Is this statement right here at the top of the page, is that except as described above, no additional recognized environmental conditions to the property were identified during the phase one ESA, therefore no additional environmental site assessment is recommended for the property. So the one thing they identified, which was a fuel and oil release back in nineteen ninety-nine that's documented within the DNR system, and so we still needed the phase one to show, okay, this is the history, and we needed the phase one in the event that we start digging and we find something that couldn't have been detected through this, this history examination. So the report has kind of offered us an indemnifying element and at this time there is no further recommendation that we take any action, and so we should be in a very good position for the closing and to make sure that we are well insured in the event that we did find something more. There's no actual real action, it's just kind of an update report unless the council wants to take some action.
Would you do for, for me Jason, everyone up here know, but for the public's benefit, where is this property exactly?
Oh, it's a seven, there's seven properties on Orange Street with the, the other two boundaries bringing Seminary and Mill, and then Jefferson kind of goes through the middle. So it's, the areas are.
Isn't that Court and Mill?
Yeah.
You said Seminary, isn't that Court and Mill?
Oh, Court, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, Court, yeah.
And then Jefferson kind of cuts through.
Jefferson cuts through, right, it's the, the low, one of the buildings that is being acquired is the advanced dairy, the bright blue advanced dairy building.
And I would see the rest of this would be north side of Port Street to south side of Mill Street, north of Clutcher.
Correct.
There we go. Questions or comments from Mr. Glassberg? Thanks for the report, we don't need any action tonight if there's no discussion about council. Thank you Jason. Okay, next would be item twelve, light resolution, two thousand twenty-four, for municipal exemption for Hill Country Property Purchase.
Yeah, so this is another step that the DNR recommends that we take in order that, again, as far as the DNR is concerned, is, it offers protection to, to the municipality who is purchasing the property. So there is a flyer there kind of explaining what a local government environmental liability exemption is, that's outlined in the state statute. We did, I do have the, oops, it's wrong cover sheet, sorry. I don't know, it's sorry, I went and just, okay, so this is outlined in State Statute two ninety-two and exempts counties, municipalities and other local government units from environmental investigation, cleanup responsibilities at properties they own, when the local government obtains title to contaminated or potentially contaminated property in a specific way. So the specific way that they're talking about is the actual passing of this resolution which says the reason for the city's involvement is to make sure that blighted property no longer exists. So part of our effort here is to bring redevelopment and part of the, the reason for our effort again is that the Orange Street project, which dates back clear into the eighties, has dealt with on a continuous basement, basis, blighted or contaminated properties. So I've reviewed this with the DNR, we've reviewed this with the city attorney, we've been in conversations with the city administrator, and you can see the resolution that is being asked that you pass in order that we have this exemption.
Okay, so in your package you can see the resolution that is being proposed, which is two thousand twenty-four dash four, so we will entertain a motion to adopt, to waive, suspend the rules of way of reading and adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash four.
I'll make that.
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Walters, is there discussion?
Jason, with this resolution, this would have all seven of those properties in one, one package, if you will, because you had said before that we were talking about having one property and then the other six, if I recall correctly, but now we're having everything in together.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, so what you're referring to is that at one point we were anticipating potentially two closings, however, two closings does not create a separation or a barrier as far as the municipal exemption.
Okay.
Is concerned, so yes, this, this resolution covers all seven properties and stands alone as it pertains to the closing of the properties.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing them, we'll need a roll call, please.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Fruit.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
Carrie.
Thank you, next is item thirteen, consider potential amendments to pedestrian plan for Eighth Street Project, this comes from Public Works.
Oh, I see Andy's still here, he would like to touch on this. I mean, I could, but he's so much better at it than I am.
Well, thank you. So this, this matter is related to the Eighth Street Park Street Improvement Project that is set for construction beginning soon. The plan included a new sidewalk on the west side of Park Street from Seventh to Eighth Street. That plan included the replacement of the existing half block of sidewalk and the extension of new sidewalk through the, the north portion of that block. The landowner on the southwest corner of that intersection objected to the sidewalk stating that they have play equipment and that is a, the only recreational space available for their children. So there was discussion at a couple of Public Works meetings and the landowner did, I think she was hidden behind the camera last time, but the landowner did make an appearance and an appeal to the Public Works Committee for an ultimate decision on either removal of the sidewalk or deviating the align, alignment of the sidewalk to the back of the curb or narrowing up the, the sidewalk terrace area for snow storage and that then passed through council for, or passed through, through committee for a recommendation. So it is my understanding, I don't have my notes with me, but I believe the committee recommendation was to remove the sidewalk extension from the plan.
Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, and would like to make a motion to do so?
I would, yes, is there a motion? Put it in fact there.
No, I see one right now.
Uh, yes, I will make a motion to consider amending the pedestrian plan to the Eighth Street roadway to remove the extension on Park Street from the plan.
Motion from Mr. Melby, did you get that motion? Whoever's taking that? Yeah, yeah, of course.
So motion to amend the pedestrian plan to remove the sidewalk.
Yeah.
On the west side of Park Street.
Correct.
Excuse me, is that specifically to the extension of new sidewalk? So replacement of the existing sidewalk?
Right, there is existing sidewalk on the other properties, and this is again between Seventh and Eighth.
Correct.
So replace the existing sidewalks but don't add any more. Is that where we're at, Mr. Melby?
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
Time to check out?
Okay, we have the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Tepley, is there discussion?
Again, the, the one question, did we clarify whether those who currently have sidewalk wanted the sidewalk replaced or eliminated? Do you know, Jason?
I haven't heard any feedback on that, so.
They were sent notices obviously.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing them, we'll need a roll call, please.
Chambers.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Tepley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, item fourteen, municipal license renewals, it is that time of year again, and in your package you've got a full list of them, liquor, beer, wine. Licenses offered, wine renewal. Mr. Wendell, do we need to read this list?
No, it's not a resolution or a motion.
Okay, so just entertain a motion to grant license renewals?
Yes.
Okay, entertain a motion to grant the license renewals in the city as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Walters, is there discussion? Okay, hearing them all in favor of renewing the licenses in the city as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Fifteen is liquor license renewals, which I believe we can handle the same way we just did that, so entertain a motion to remove what liquor licenses within the city.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion?
Is there a particular list on that?
Yeah, I don't see a list on that.
They're combined.
Well, I was gonna say, was it on the same?
Yes.
And so it's on, okay.
It's in the list that we just.
Not the same, yep.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of renewing the liquor licenses in the city, that's presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And sixteen, committee and codification of your initial findings by the city attorney, Mr. Wendell.
Jason, would you be able to pull up the PowerPoint that I emailed you? We're going to be done. Oh, you did?
Please send the report.
Steal your seat if not. Okay, let's see, try this way. It looks like there might be two, Michael, is that possible? Uh, one is the PDF version, just for. See, and which would you like? The PowerPoint, please. See what it does here, if I attach the screen back. Okay, there we go. I go into a little more detail, but as the councils are aware, I've been tasked with reviewing our current committee structure and a draft recodification of our code of ordinances. I've been working at this for long enough that I feel it important to report my initial findings and seek some direction from the council before we get into, next slide, Jason. The details of my findings. I think it's important for this conversation that I just make a note about change. For example, I should change it to some notes since it's a plural. So first, change is hard. I acknowledge that. It, you know, is acknowledged as a universal truth, but that doesn't mean people always internalize exactly how hard change can be. Change is necessary. Even if you want to keep everything exactly the same, the world is going to change around you. And so you need to change, even if your goal is to keep things the same. I am not someone who advocates for change for change's sake. But I'm gonna talk you through some things and issue some recommendations that do represent significant changes. Any critique of a proposed change needs to be grounded in reality detail substance rather than just because it's a change. And then contemplating change is not a condemnation of those who came before or decisions that were made before us. I wasn't here, I don't know what was going on at the time things were, were being decided. But just because it's the way we've always done something, does not mean it's the best way to do something. It just means it was the best way someone found in the moment and it remained a viable solution. The other important thing for the context of this conversation is, and I have a statutory citation here, but the translation is basically, except for those duties that are assigned to other entities by the state statutes, ultimate power of the city lies with this council. So I'm not going over anything today that is not in your authority to, to change, to review. And just for my own peace of mind as the city attorney, I need to know that you have contemplated some of the things that I'm going over today, even if you make that decision not to make any changes. So regarding the code, before I was appointed, we contracted, I call them MutiCode, it's actually Civic Plus, but we contracted with a company that took all of our ordinances, scanned them, shifted things around, re-chaptered them, checked the statutory citations, and then most importantly, digitized them in a way that was better than the one that we had available to us. And that's called codification or recodification. As I mentioned in a previous meeting, the draft of that was provided to me earlier this year. I've been reading through it. Once we finalize the first draft, that will be sent back for final proofreading, updates, organization, and then a final book version will be published. It's important to bear in mind, and I didn't discover this right away, but we never sent them our updated ordinances. So the eight hundred and fourteen, eight, eight hundred and fourteen page document that I've talked about previously is only good through December 1st of 2020. And so everything I'm doing now, I, there's more on the tail end that I'll need to get into. Regarding the committees, we passed a resolution recently dissolving certain unnecessary committees, boards, commissions. As part of that resolution, I was also directed to do a review of the overall committee structure. In pursuing that, I found information that supports twenty-six different boards, committees, and commissions, including the ad hoc rules committee that was cited earlier. Of those twenty-six, I can tell you how six work without those that are defined in statute. What that means is that despite efforts, I could not find the document that created the committee, outlines of powers, duties, responsibilities. Some I can find in name, and that is it. So, the current state of my review. Next slide.
Next.
Yep. The six that I can tell you how they work, I can tell you that because they are codified in our code of ordinances. And so I realized that the only reliable source of information I have on our committees is the code of ordinances. So really, my, I only have one job. It's to review the code of ordinances. Part of my recommendation could be that we remove committee designations from the code of ordinances in the future, but that's where they are now. So as of today, there's a sixteen page executive summary, and I've gotten through approximately two hundred and eight pages out of the seven hundred and ninety-eight remaining pages. Again, that takes us to December 1st of 2020. At this point, though, before I continue with this, I want direction from the council for reasons that we will get into. Specifically, the state of the code. In 2020, my predecessor, Attorney McGow, prepared a memorandum titled Disorganization and Redundancy in our view to municipal code, wherein he calls it the most disorganized he had found in his review of twenty-five separate municipal codes. Civic Plus MutiCode, whose business is literally to review municipal codes, has described ours as particularly challenging. That is a good deal of understatement in that phrase. I've been here for five months. Again, I, or nine months. I was not here when decisions were made. I'm not in any position to judge people. I always say, you'll know when I can judge you when I'm wearing the black robes. I am not trying to say anyone did anything wrong or that the reasons that they made certain decisions were incorrect. But I am faced with the code of ordinances that we have now that has resulted from all that. And in order to move forward from it, I need to be able to speak frankly. So I'm not doing so as trying to put anyone down or insult anyone. It just is what it is. As I said, I'm sorry, next slide. Attorney McGow and MutiCode are engaged in understatement. Our code is not only disorganized, but it's outdated, contradictory with both state statute and often itself, and does not reflect the reality of the subject it purported to govern. I would point specifically, very early on in my tenure, I discussed the Director of Public Works ordinance that outlines that it's the plumbing, electrical, building inspector for the city, oversees the street departments, and from my understanding, even when we had one that wasn't anywhere near what the job actually was. And so from reports like that, issues that I faced in my tenure as the city attorney, discussions with others, it's become clear that whether by necessity or intent, when faced with certain difficulties created by the foibles of our code, certain personnel and officials have just needed to ignore it. That is a condemnation of the code, but also means that we need to be able to empower our people to come forward and say, hey, this is the problem that I encountered. Can we make this change? And then, so the, I have two options for how to proceed. Option one, I keep doing what I'm doing. I read through the rest of the code, continue giving my feedback, generate that second outline. It's gonna take a lot of time, which is, translates to money. But the, the benefit of that is that the code with which we are familiar will be preserved in a more effective format. So some of the kinks will be worked out. And what I would hope comes out the other end is a fully operational code brought into the modern era. The second one, which is the one I kinda tried to warn you about, we start over. We toss our code of ordinances, I pick up a model code and bring it before council. We work together to identify specific issues, areas that we absolutely think are, that Richland Center needs to have this specific ordinance. And we can make whatever changes we, we want to to it. But it saves me from having to do such a thorough legal review because the model code that we would use as a base has already been through that kind of process. So it would be something that has been generated with all of the statutory changes and issues that I have encountered resolved. And then again, just some, some customization. And so that is really the question of how the council wants me to proceed. But in order to properly contemplate that, I wanted to explain some of the issues that I keep referring to. So these are just an example of things that I would like to see in a revised code, either addressed or incorporated. Omnibus schedules. Currently, in any ordinance in which a fee is required for a service or is listed, it, that fee is in that ordinance. So if there's a zoning permit, you have to pay a ten dollar fee for. That is in the zoning ordinance. If you need a dog license, that's in the dog license ordinance. If you need other licenses, alcohol license, something like that, you'd have to go and find each specific ordinance. If you want to change the amount of those fees, you'd have to, again, amend that specific ordinance. Best practice nowadays is to adopt a fee schedule. So rather than setting a specific amount for each individual fee, you can say, this is, you know, the equivalent of getting a dog license, that is going to be a Schedule A fee. The Schedule A fee is ten bucks or what have you. And so then, all we'd have to go through is change all of the ordinances to read their appropriate schedule entry. And then that way, every year, two years, we can review the fee schedule, update that, and then it will automatically update all of the fees listed out in all of our various ordinances. You can also do that with penalties. I had traffic court this morning. If I encounter someone who's been charged with disorderly conduct versus excessive speed, those each have separate penalties. And there's a range to each penalty. I think disorderly is twenty-five to four hundred, maybe. What we could do is just say, any violation of our code of ordinances is a fee of between ten and five hundred dollars. And then we can go through and we can set fixed amounts for various offenses. Or you could just leave it to the discretion of the prosecutor to determine the appropriate forfeiture to petition the court for. Regarding delegation of power, this is the thing that I really just need to make sure that if we move, when we move forward from here, the council has fully considered their option. As I pointed out in my second slide, the council is the ultimate authority within the city. Currently, our code delegates not, not an incorrect amount, not a wrong amount, just an amount of power that is concerning to me to certain other bodies. This, again, not an attack on them, but just the example that came to mind in my review. There are certain entries in the park board ordinance that are directly contrary to the council's move to adopt an administrative form of government. So there are two conflicting statements as to who has authority over the employees of the parks department. And so, one way or another, that conflict needs to be resolved. And if you're fixing things like that anyway, you need to determine whether or not this is the body that you want exercising this authority. So they have control over the funds relevant to the park. Absolutely fine. That's, you know, what they're meant to do. But is that something that the council is okay with ceding to another body? Unnecessary complex policies and procedures and duplication of effort, I think those are best exemplified by actually the, the picnic licenses, the temporary alcohol licenses that this council issues. Those are an administrative exercise. Not to add more to Ashley's job duties, but there's little reason it couldn't be like a dog license as long as you submit the proper paperwork, as long as everything checks out with the background, the clerk can issue that on the council's behalf. It would not need to come before you every month for these, these temporary things. Flip side again, it's absolutely within this council's authority to say, yeah, but we want that. We want to know what these licenses are being issued for, we want that. Final approval. And then unclear responsibilities, again, the, the conflict in the parks. The one that came to mind, though, for me is the cemetery committee, which I can find a salary for, but in the cemetery ordinance, it specifically says that the governance of cemeteries are to be, is held by the park board and the public works committee, which then, again, is another contradiction because is that supposed to be a joint body? And that's what the cemetery committee is? Or does the parks board have power over it? Or does the public works? Or does the public works have to approve everything that the parks board? And you start to see where this gets complicated. And then finally, why? Why, why do this? Why put yourselves through this? The code of ordinances is the foundation to your house. You pour it wrong, you don't invest the time and the effort into it, anything you try and build is gonna crumble. This is not, it's not pretty. Nobody's gonna thank you for it or pay attention to it if you take this step. But it is going to make everything that you and those who follow you do in the future easier to accomplish, faster, simpler. It is going to allow the city and its government to function more effectively and therefore better serve the citizens thereof. And also, I don't need a decision from the council tonight on the direction. I would actually rather that you take this time, refer to the information that I provided, and really think about what's at stake here and, and really what we want to invest, if we're gonna preserve, or what we're willing to lose if we're going to start over. Questions?
Mr. Wendell, when you and I discussed this with the administrator on Friday, we talked through what you were going to present tonight. An option, the recodification process, which was begun, as you mentioned, with MutiCode as an attempt to address this issue. Basically, the point is, that is an option, but it's your opinion. There's more to fix than that.
Yeah, they, they made sure, you know, if it cites to Wisconsin statute sixty-six and sixty-six is now eighty-six, they fixed that. They don't go in and determine who the cemetery committee is made up of.
Yep, and, and one, I guess, loose way to say this, how things got where they are. Richland Center has existed for how many generations at this point? And if a resolution, oh, I'm sorry, an ordinance was passed, whenever it was, it's still there. And as you just pointed out, you know, people come and go from here all the time. All the persons, city attorneys. And something new gets passed and, as you just said, something could have been fifty years old and is now in conflict with something that was passed last week.
Yep.
Because unless you looked at what was passed fifty years ago, you wouldn't catch that. And what, when you dug into this, you're finding that that's, there's a lot of that.
Yes.
Is that the easy way to say that?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, I explained everything to perfection? Almost.
If the council chooses, I guess, what you're suggesting, Plan B or so, would be kind of a do-over of the code?
Yes.
Okay, we start. So in that case, what would the council be doing themselves? What would they be doing?
So I think I've been pretty clear from the upfront that I want the council involved in these sorts of decisions. And so what I would do is, I would go out and I'd find a model code that I thought was appropriate, that was from a similar community or otherwise was comparable. I would bring that to the committee for their review, just get a sense of, well, what, what does a code of ordinance mean? I, I would be surprised if anybody had read through the entire thing, knew everything that was in there. So it might be helpful to do that at least once. And then, once you have the opportunity to read through that as a council, you can determine what's missing, what would you like to see removed from the model? And we would work together, I would make. And then ultimately, part of the recodification process. And UniCode is willing to help us adopt a new model code, so we would just continue the progress that we're already making. What UniCode produces is an omnibus ordinance that, once you pass it, it repeals every other ordinance that came before it with certain limited exceptions that are, you know, enumerated within the new ordinance, and then that, this new code would replace it. And so when I said that this is an unprecedented opportunity, that's what I meant. We have the ability to rebuild the code from the ground up. And if there's, you know, if we just want to start from the second story and build up, that's fine. If we do want to start from the ground up, that's fine too, but this is the time.
Michael, your thoughts on how, as a council, if we, I'm just saying, if we do decide to go down that path, best ways to handle something like that? As you're laying it out so far, it sounds like, I hate to use the word monumental task, but you already talked about it. How much you've, how much time you've spent on that. Are you thinking that we would do like smaller committees that break that up, take a look at that, what do we want to do with, or what, what does that look like in your mind and how we would progress with something like that?
So the first answer is, and I mean this with respect and, and just a statement of confidence in your competence, figure it out. You guys decide on your own how you, how you want to respond to that. I'm certainly here to make suggestions, smaller committees, break it down by chapters, you know, a zoning committee or a public property committee or a dog committee. That's certainly an option, but that is, is the expression of the council's authority, and this is one where I'm going to really encourage you to be active participants to the point where I would really advise that you figure out yourselves how you'd like to make those recommendations and changes.
Thank you.
Michael, you mentioned incorporating departments into the process as well.
Yes. So the, what the next step will be, if we elect to continue review of the existing code, is breaking it up by relevant departments and sending it to department heads for their reviews and comments, recognizing that they're not all lawyers, but they are the ones who have to deal with the practical impacts of these ordinances every day. And so if there's an issue with our equivalent to a criminal code, I'd send that to Billy, and he would weigh in and say, hey, we never write these tickets, or someone found a way to dye the smoke, and so our display of power ordinance is no longer applicable because it's purple instead of gray. Not a hypothetical.
I knew it wasn't.
But, yeah, so that would be, that would be where we want department head input. And again, that's a way to, to get buy-in from, you know, this is the council's baby, but these are the people in the playpen with it, so it's important to get them. And then, hopefully, that'll create a sense of investment for them as well, because they've had an opportunity to weigh in on, on the laws affecting their duties.
And Michael, do you need directions tonight?
No. As I said, I would rather you take some time to...
So you've, I would be proudly in now here, in front of everyone. You've used the term tremendous opportunity, you're a great opportunity. I, I see it that way too. What you're telling the council is, they themselves and only they themselves, have the ability to have a tremendous impact on the future of the city. It's not the kind of thing everybody voted for us for, and it's not a big new building going up, but it's the bedrock of how this government runs, how the city and...
Am I saying anything inaccurate?
Nope. It really is. And, excuse me. So, an example, an easy example, this council could have, even just a month ago, formed a committee, passed an ordinance, done with the information. They had at the time the information, you had at the time, and then it's possible, just picking any number, there could be something on the books from 1963 that sort of addressed the same thing and is in conflict.
Yes.
But they're both on the books.
Again, not a hypothetical.
Absolutely. And, and now they're both on the books, and they could provide conflicting ...
And unless I have some reason to look at the 1963 ordinance other than this codification review, I wouldn't necessarily know that there's a conflicting ordinance. And then 10 years down the line, whoever, you know, succeeds me runs into this issue, and the problem perpetuates.
Exactly right. And same with the city employees and the council. So it is a tremendous opportunity. These guys can basically grab the municipal code and do it over in their vision.
Yep.
That's a pretty big deal.
So in doing some work on our website, I went and searched out other communities and whatnot, and I found quite a few that had this UniCode form of ordinances.
Yep, that is their entire business model.
So this isn't something new to our area, or I think it's...
No, we've...
I found quite a few.
Vernon County uses UniCode, Richland County is using UniCode. There's a, something Ecode 360, or there's a competitor out there. UniCode is just who we've contracted with, so. They're very familiar with Wisconsin. They are a national, if not international company, but they are, they, we have a local representative, so the same person who's doing Richland County's is also the same person who's dealing with us.
Because I also found quite a few that, you know, they were in the process of going that route of recodification or, you know, kind of the, how did you describe it, the basic code?
Model, model code.
Model code, yep.
UniCode, I think it's over 3,300 codes they have on their platform and they support. And they have, if you just Google UniCode list ordinances, they have a, a webpage that lists all of the Wisconsin municipalities that are on their platform, you know, everywhere, counties, cities, there's a ton of them, just, just in Wisconsin, and they support.
Okay. Good. I thought we were going to blaze the trail there, Colonel. It's okay.
Further questions or comments for Mr. Wendell? Okay, thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, moves us to item 17, approval of personnel investigator. Mr. Wendell, will you handle that as well?
Yes. So, as the community's aware, there have been a number of departures from the city. The council, the administrator have taken this concern seriously, and it was decided that we would pursue an outside investigation of policies, practices, environment. The direction of the personnel committee was to present them with options for an investigator. However, it slipped my mind at the time, and a colleague reminded me, this is exactly what we have insurance for. And so, we've contacted our insurance company. They have a contract with a law firm who I have worked with in the past. I would have no objection to, I've, I've found them to be competent and professional. And they would come in and perform this investigation, determine if there are any changes that need to be made, make recommendations as to how we can improve the work environment, improve retention, or, you know, let us know that we were doing everything right. Some people just wanted a new opportunity. But what is important is that, you know, it's not me telling you this, it's not Ashley telling you this, it's someone with no real skin in the game. And then, the benefit of this proposal would be that it is at no additional cost. It is part of our insurance coverage. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Ashley, but...
Okay, so you're seeking a motion to approve this?
Yes. Let me just remind myself of the name of the firm.
Is it Lindon, Marsa?
Yeah, that sounds right. Lindner?
Was it Marsa?
Linder and Mar, yeah. So it would be the Linder and Mar, Mar, Marsa law firm.
I'm going to swallow it, Michael.
I'm kidding. I also just, on a personal note, I'm not sure, now that we've let them know that this is something we're contemplating, we could stop them, but I think it would be better to approve.
Michael, are you saying that within our insurance, through our insurance, the city's insurance, that since we're having this discussion, that they could go ahead and do this anyway, without us saying, hey, we want this done?
I'm saying it's not worth picking that fight.
Fair enough.
We have someone who's willing to come in and do a costly investigation as part of something that we're already paying for.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's not a prepared motion, just entertaining a motion to approve personnel investigator. Okay, entertain a motion to approve personnel investigator.
I'll make the motion.
Motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second?
Second.
We'll go to Mr. Melby on that one. Is there further discussion?
When, after we, if, if it does go through, approved, how soon are we looking at the law firm starting this investigation?
Shortly, depending on their availability. We've already had some initial contacts. They know how to get ahold of me, and so we would just let them know that they've been given the green light and, well, I don't want to speculate on what their investigatory...
Sure.
...process will be, but I would imagine pretty shortly thereafter.
Soon. And this would constitute a third-party investigation, essentially?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, Gary, now, let's have a roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Fruit?
Aye.
Tefly?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, appointments to committees, commission boards, and confirm appointments. There are two. We need a new citizen appointee to the joint review board, appointing Mr. John Collins, and we need a new citizen appointee to, sorry, downtown business, appointee to tourism, appointing Mr. Jamie Walsh. You're taking a motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm.
Motion for Mr. Downs, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and Mr. Chambers, is there discussion? All in favor of confirming Mr. Collins to joint review board, Mr. Walsh to tourism commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, public comment. No action will be taken on any matter originating under this item. I do have one. Mr. Rod Perry, what would you like to tell us tonight?
Well, I have some questions that I and some other citizens have asked each other from time to time, so...
Can we get a microphone?
Yeah.
So, a little less, or the team's folks?
Some questions that other citizens and I have asked each other from time to time, so, and now I bring them to the council rather than laying them in the mayor's lap, which I know he doesn't appreciate. Number one, why are trailers, campers, boats allowed to be parked on streets on, on the tree bank in many neighborhoods around the city? One has an electrical cord stretched across a public sidewalk, and this went on all last summer. Number two, why is any business allowed to conduct operations on and/or block a public sidewalk, sometimes even overnight or for an entire weekend? Number three, I just got the answer for, is the council considered why there seems to be a wholesale exodus of people from city employment and elected or appointed positions? And I think you've taken a step to answer that question. Number four, I detest closed sessions, and in my 20 years conducting utility commission meetings, I avoided them as much as possible. I know they're necessary and even required in some instances. So, we wondered what is that leaks the information from closed session city meetings, making those closed sessions seem useless? Number five, why is there apparently no enforcement of city ordinances which prohibit placing discarded items at the curb? It happens all over the city year-round. Are these people contacted? Are they ticketed? Are they fined? The same question applies to unshelved sidewalks in the winter and unmowed yards and lots in the summer. Number six, is it true our police department no longer conducts late evening business place door checks downtown and at the Richland Square? If that is true, why? Number seven, when Foundry Drive was reworked and resurfaced, it was ostensibly to reduce truck traffic on Bowman Drive. But Schreiber Foods never changed their loading dock access to accommodate this, so the trucks can't use Foundry Drive. Just wondering why it was never required at Schreiber. Now, some of these questions are mine, some came from others. As an aside, I'm sure I am, that I have attended more council meetings than anyone else in the room, with the possible exception of Mr. Olson. And I don't remember everything, but I remember a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Perry, could I get a copy of your questions?
Sure.
Ashley, would you be able to forward those to the council, please?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Rod.
Okay, next is item 18, closed session. The chair may entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.851e. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session, council will consider the investment of public funds. Entertain a motion for closed session.
So will.
Motion for Ms. Walters, is there a second?
Yeah.
Second for Mr. Downs, is there discussion? All in favor of entering closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, for closed session.